All in favor, please raise your right hand.
There we go.
I'd like to welcome all of you to this meeting of the commission. Remind you that these proceedings are videotaped. If you desire to have a copy, you may obtain one through contacting our county clerk. Remind you too, that these proceedings will be on the county website in a couple of days. Remind you too, that you're invited to speak to this body. If you're not already on the agenda, I ask that you fill out a speaker form in the back and bring it up to our clerk and we'll recognize you at the proper time during the meeting. But we have a couple already here that's been submitted prior to the meeting. One item of recognition, I'd like to welcome back our former county attorney, Mr. Doug Bachelor. He's sitting in tonight for Chris Driver, who is away from town. So Doug, thanks for coming back in.
Actually, our county attorney emeritus.
That is true.
I believe we gave him that designation when he retired.
I didn't want to make him feel old, so I didn't. Any consideration we can get about our age, I think is always warranted.
Good.
Moving now to our special recognitions. Our first order of business is one we always enjoy. The awarding of the October 2016 Employee of the Month. Mr. Richardson is going to make a presentation to Tiffany Rowe with Animal Services. All those that would like to come forward for this presentation, please do so.
That is a fine-looking hound, Ms. Rowe, you were taking your picture with.
I'd like to read Tiffany's bio before I hand this over to Mr. Richardson. Tiffany's been with Animal Services for nine years. She's grown with the department, held numerous positions, vital team player, and someone many of the staff look to for. End of the day, however, this man. Tiffany is a mom and a wife. Her daughter and husband are huge parts of her life, and it shows by the way she smiles when she talks about them, by the numerous pictures that are scattered on her. Tiffany is also a parent to two pets, a dog, and numerous application at her mother's small farm. Those to show Tiffany is a true animal person at heart and has found her purpose.
Well, I actually could talk all night about Tiffany and her dedication to the county and her pride and her performance, but I know you're not going to allow me that long. So I will say, when I first met Tiffany, she was a county tech, an excellent one at that. We moved to the new shelter five years, a little over five years ago. She needed a new challenge, so she became our adoption coordinator and our public relations person, and she did an excellent job at that. Excelled, brought many lost animals back to their owners due to her research and her knowledge that she has. Then she needed another challenge, so she became a field officer. So now she's in the field. But besides that, she also does, look on our Facebook page, all the media and the graphic arts benefit of her. We've got two great ones right into one person there.
Tiffany, would you like to say something? Well, with this, I'd like to present you the October Employee of the Month. At you'll receive eight hours' pay. There you go.
Congratulations. Mr. Richardson gets to do double duty tonight with a proclamation for Type 1 Diabetes Day. Do we have someone here from the association?
Ms. Dorn.
Okay, would you get them to introduce themselves as they come up?
Would you please introduce?
My name is Alice Dorn, and I take care of JDRF advocacy in the CSRA. This is my daughter Caroline, who has Type 1 and has for the last three years. This is my daughter Margaret, my husband Lee, my daughter Ruth Anna, and my son Robert, one of our community members. Ms. Alyssa.
Thank you very much. We'd like to present this proclamation for Type 1 Diabetes Day. Whereas Type 1 Diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, a hormone that enables people to use energy. Whereas Type 1 Diabetes strikes both children and adults at any age, comes on suddenly, creates dependence on artificial insulin for life, there is a constant threat of devastating complications, and at present, there is no cure. Whereas, there are more than 3 million children and adults living with Type 1 Diabetes, whereas more than 8,000 children and currently unknown number of adults in Georgia live with Type 1 Diabetes. Whereas, each year in Georgia, there are approximately 500 children diagnosed with Type 1 Diabetes. Whereas, there is a need for education to increase knowledge, encourage advocacy, promote safe care for those living with Type 1 Diabetes with an ultimate goal of finding a cure. Now, therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissions, Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2016, Type 1 Diabetes Day, Columbia County, Georgia, signed and sealed this first day of November 2016.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. We have another proclamation that we were looking for someone to recognize, Retired Educators Day, and we have a retired educator sitting on this commission, so he was elected to make this presentation. Mr. Morris? Is someone here from the retired educators group?
To work together.
Don't tell them.
I'm Mary Asevis. I'm president of the Columbia County Retired Teachers Association. Fox, I'm retired from Greenbrier Elementary.
Steve Fox, the treasurer.
Well, this is a real honor for me. It retired in 2005. A while. Would like to issue this proclamation for our retired educators. Whereas, the governor of the state of Georgia is between the day of Sunday, 6, 2016, Retired Educators Day in Georgia. Whereas, there are more than 118,000 retired educators in Georgia, 26,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Education. Whereas, the retired educations of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service, making valuable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. Whereas, it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and society. Whereas, local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now, therefore, Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 6, 2016, Retired Educators Day, and thank them for their continued support and dedication to make a positive difference in our community. And. I would like to take one minute. They stumbled across a church. Study that was done recently of all of the people that were surveyed said that they respect the most Erica, retired educator.
Really?
And who, and who. Who they respect and believe the least are politicians.
Since you're my former teacher, how does that, excuse me, is a politician?
Mr. Morris is about to leave the education world and come back to the political world, though.
What's an educator always need?
It is now time to put our emergency services director, Ms. Pam Tucker, in the spotlight. She's known to most all of you for the graduation class of the group 26.
And I'd like to ask Steve Castle, who is the Engineering Services Division Director, and Tim Holloway, who is Roads and Bridges Manager, to come up as we call out the names. We had 22, Mr. Chairman, go through this class from Roads and Bridges, and only six are here, so this will be quick. But I do want to say that they all came to every part of the class, they were at every session, they did great. A lot of really good young men out there. And what makes me happiest about Roads and Bridges going through a community emergency response team training is that their jobs are dangerous. And if they can offer immediate medical assistance or rescue assistance to one of their coworkers out in these dangerous places along the roads and in the roads, then they can save a life, you know, before an ambulance or a fire truck can get there. So we're really proud of all 22. Mr. Richardson, come down and help me with the certificates. These are the six that are here, and Tim has the rest. First, we'll call up Nicholas Baker. Nicholas is in the Marine Corps Reserve, and he's actually been serving for four years now in the Marine Corps Reserve. And Norman Carden. Norman, he's a really happy guy. He was just one of our star students. He likes to ride and work with horses. Norman does. We have Dennis Oliphant. Dennis's famed acclaim is he likes working on cars, so if you ever have car trouble, you know who to call after hours. And Brent Robertson. Brent, on his spare time, he likes to play golf, actually. Mark Story. Mark was jumping up early. He knew he was next in the alphabet. Mark likes to spend time with his family, fishing, reading. And then last but not least, Jason Thomaston. Jason likes fishing and working. And I will also let you know that out of this group of 22, two of those went down to Chatham County about a month or so ago after the first hurricane, Hermine, and helped remove debris and operated heavy equipment. They volunteered, even though they're going to get reimbursed from Chatham County, but they volunteered to drive down there and to help those folks during the hurricane. So I'm real proud of our Roads and Bridges employees that went through this training.
Come over to center for a group picture.
I just want to say thanks for all they do. As a citizen of Columbia County during the ice storm, I know Roads and Bridges was a big part of the response during that widespread disaster. But I don't know what kind of training they went to, but if it ever comes down to a situation where you're around and I need mouth-to-mouth, I'm good. We'll just leave that one low. I've got a living will, it'd be good. Thank you for all y'all do on a daily basis, not just for this. Always there. And I don't see the government workers as hard-working, bad rap, but when chips are down and the disaster's out there and the roadway's blocked, y'all are the ones doing it. I just want to say thanks and how proud I am to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Another good job. We have a couple of people that would like to address the commission on an item coming up later on in our agenda. The first being Marcus Campbell. He's in favor of the project, but has some concerns that he would like to have information. Could you give us your name and address, please, sir?
Good evening. My name is Marcus Campbell, and I live at 949 Kate Drive in Evans. The concern I have is, I'm just seeking clarity on how charter school that has been proposed or that was discussed at the planning meeting, how is it going to impact the community that we live in in Blanchard Estates? And the concern I have is, I guess the impression I'm under is that they purchased or they're going to build on 16 acres. But where is that going to take place on that 48-acre plot of land, Blanchard Woods Road? And how is that, how close are they going to be to the Blanchard community? How is the traffic situation going to be mitigated to where it's bearable for the community in that area? Are they going to use Willie Daniels on an entrance off of Blanchard Woods Road? And if so, what is that going to look like? So we're just seeking clarity on that.
Mr. Slach, do you want to go into some of those questions?
I'll do the best I can. The concept we're showing is showing the, I guess, the western part of the property, the closer to the community you're speaking of. But the access, the main access is actually off of Blanchard Woods Drive, not off of Willie Daniel. They do show a driveway onto Willie Daniel. I was actually speaking with our planning director right before we came down here, is that they were hard-set on having that connection if it needed to be there. We don't know they have to have that connection at this point, but that is a question we've asked. We've looked at the stacking inside the school. It appears to us that all of the traffic coming to the school and or off of Blanchard Woods Drive, they internal to the school and then leave back out on the Blanchard Woods, so they don't, I don't see why they would use Willie Daniel. But again, I'm just going off what I'm looking at. I haven't spoke to them personally about it. That was your, so the location, the traffic, what was your other concern?
See, when we spoke at the, spoke to the, it's the persons that are building the school about how they're going to fit that school on that property. So what he explained was that they're going to try to maintain the natural look of the property, where they're not taking down unnecessarily, they're not taking down trees and things of that nature. But I'm looking at if, from the plot that we saw online, it looks like the school is going to butt up against Willie Daniels. So is, but my understanding is they're going to purchase that entire plot, which I think is about 46 acres. So are they going, is the school going to be positioned further down toward Blanchard Road, or is it going to be positioned closer to the Blanchard Woods Estate community?
Your screen on in front of you there? Right in front of you.
And if it is, are they going to maintain a natural buffer there of trees and things of that nature to mitigate the noise?
Go one more.
There you go. That's, you should have it on your screen in front of you as well, right in front of you. There you can see your neighborhood, turn with back here in the back. The main entrance, this, the one we're looking at here is not the latest and greatest concept I've seen, but it showed the main entrance coming in here. The road would kind of wind around the school, kind of come back into here, so all the traffic would kind of follow that circular pattern. Lots of stacking internal to the site, not stacking out on Blanchard Woods Drive. You can see all the green, the buffers. So they, when I say the western part of the property, it is the western part of that 40 acres, but as you can see, the school is not taking up the entire piece of it. There's a lot of buffer around it. And again, these are concepts. They haven't submitted full-blown sort of plans to us. These are strictly concepts at this point.
And that was a concern we had, or at least that was my concern, is at the last meeting, the traffic study hasn't, wasn't, I'm assuming it's still.
We did receive the traffic study, and I'll let our senior director speak to that. He's reviewed it, he's looked at it.
We received the traffic study last week. It's about what we expected, which was, they showed that there was going to be some improvements necessary at the intersection of Washington Road and Blanchard Road. Those are being accounted for as part of the Washington Road project, and you should see that, that intersection start to come to life in the next five to six months before the school opens. You'll see a signal up there as well as left turn and right turn lanes coming out. What we have at the Blanchard Woods intersection, you've got plenty of capacity there to handle that through that hour and understand at certain hours it may be heavier than others, but for the most part, it's going to operate smooth. You've got a long throat all the way to the school. Down at Blanchard and Hereford, as you would expect, are some capacity problems with listing intersection, but we're looking at some concepts to add some, a left turn lane there and maybe some, kind of help that flow a little bit better. But over time, as you see these roadway projects come to life, the school will be sort of a drop in the bucket compared to the rest of the backup. You're going to have an hour during the day, like a normal school, where it's a little bit heavier than others, but it's outside the normal rush hour.
I guess the concern I would have is that hour or so, possible to.
It's touch.
And I'm not sure what, primary concern was the noise issue, traffic issue.
Right. What you're looking at is a concept. This will probably vary somewhere, as Mr. Slach said, you know, it's not the final, but what we have done is they're going to have to look at and demonstrate that they've got enough stacking and circulation pattern on that school, does not block any Blanchard Woods roads. Require them to build a D cell lane, something to stack them off the roadway, so that there's never an issue where they're blocking any kind of entrance from the development or the park.
Possible. How to maintain that.
Yeah, we are, staff is proposing additions to that buffer area, property line back, property line in. Or in some cases. That should lessen the impact of our proposal. Lights from, properties, so that. But I think they're trying to, in good faith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we have a request from Charles Puzier. I hope I didn't butcher that too bad. Oh, okay.
Actually, Marcus and I are kind of working together on this and separately, because I'm just going to continue on what he talked about just a little bit.
Give us your name and address, please.
Excuse me. Charles Puzier, go by Chuck, 946 Kate Drive, also in Blanchard Estates. I heard all the comments, okay? And I have no reason to discount those. I think the pinch points that they're talking about are right. I don't see that school plot as being conducive to the kind of car traffic that they're going to have. This could be a school of 600 students, all of whom have to be brought in by car. Though, I don't know how many students we're going to figure per car, I don't know in your traffic study, but I'm figuring it's about 300 cars. Families are going to have two students, some people are going to carpool. There's going to be a lot of signals. They're trying to run 300 cars into and out of there twice a day, probably over about an hour period. Figure 300 cars an hour, that's, by the math, that's five cars a minute, a car every 12 seconds. I tried to study this myself and look at it and finally went back, and Columbia County has built a lot of schools. Anybody knows how to build schools, I would think it'd be Columbia County. So I looked at the last couple of Columbia County schools that are in our area, anyway. One of them being Evans Middle School up on Hereford Farm Road, one of them being Evans Elementary School over on Gibbs Road. Those schools, and it took me a while to finally, before it dawned on me, those schools, when they're built, are built around the transportation in and out of the school. And you've got the school building itself, but the parking lots, the flow in and out of the school is pretty darn smooth. And you'll have a little bit of congestion, obviously, you have, at those sites. This school isn't built that way. This school is being built with this perimeter road concept, and that's where they're going to stack the cars. But there's no, at least I haven't seen it yet, no provision for how you're going to unload one car every 12 seconds. And I think that's part of what we need to see. The transportation study, I would understand, would not go into the interior workings of the school, but that's where the bottleneck's going to be. And that's what has to be addressed. This school is going to be a really nice school. I like the layout, but it, just the traffic flow just doesn't work internally in the school to get cars in and out on a daily basis. And remember, this is going to be twice a day, five days a week, 36 weeks a year. I came in tonight for the meeting from out there, and I passed a standing line of cars that stretches now from William Few Parkway to Wal-Mart Parkway or Wal-Mart across the street. And I just said a little silent prayer. I said, please don't make that our neighborhood every day now for the next several years. And I think we can, I think it can be avoided, but I think it's going to take some work on the part of the school, primarily, to get their internal design around how do you move the people. And still maintain the kind of aesthetics that they want for the school. So that's our recommendation, but my recommendation, concentrate. We're not trying to kill the project, Marcus and I aren't anyway. We think it can add some value to our neighborhood. Traction, of course, too. But that's not what we're about. We're trying to figure out how to make it work.
Thank you, sir. And I believe this will be part of the review once the engineering drawn.
Yeah, we actually recognize that they need a circulation study, so we put it in the motion. Part of the condition of the zoning is that they're going to have to provide a circulation drop-off study, right, that they're not going to. In the motion.
Good, Mr. Chairman. He's exactly right. Being a retired principal, that is so critical that the parents understand, you've got to have a system established, and everybody's got to cooperate with it. And when everybody does, amazing how it flows. Very incumbent upon them, because you don't want your kids outside the school, and the school day's already begun, and all that factors in. But it's my understanding, they're not going to have to deal with school buses, totally different problem. Because at our school, most of our parents drove, rode the bus, had those two things going, at least they don't have that issue. It can be worked out to the advantage of, make that plan, make it well-known, advertise it, and make it work.
Thank you, sir. And when we move now to our consent agenda, these are items that's been through the proper committee and received the necessary three votes to be put on consent. So inclined, we'll accept a motion to approve all of these items as one vote. So move. Any items needing any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Go now to vice chair Allen.
Yes, sir. Under old business, I would like to make a motion to approve the second and final reading, Resolution 16-1252, Amending Fee Schedules. Second.
This is just some minor changes to eliminate some and redo others.
Yes, sir. The eliminate, all right, it clarifies when a re-inspection fee is charged, and also clarifies when some planned resubmittals are fees.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Next item, sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number 16-32, Alcoholic Beverages, Repealing Any Conflicting Ordinance.
I believe this is more to come in compliance with the state law on some items.
Yes, sir. Changes the due date for taxes to the 20th, and it also complies with state law, correct? Yes, sir.
Other questions? All in favor?
Under new business, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve the major PUD revision to revise the layout for a portion of tax map 051, or 070U, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 20th, 2016 Planning Commission Report.
Any discussion of this revision to the PUD?
It sounded like a little bit of confusion, but I went in and talked to Mr. Strickland this afternoon, whether the road was going to be public or private, but regardless, that it will be up to county standards on all widths, and so people can get in and out, and so, so I just wanted to make sure if anybody had any fusion in reading that. And so I just wanted to make sure if anybody had any fusion in reading that.
Does this remain to be private from the last discussion?
Talking with the developer, they're going to look at redesigning the road to meet county standards. We've shown them some places we weren't happy with the road design, and he understood, and he's agreed to come back with a new design.
Other discussion? All in favor?
I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning from R8 to S1 with conditional use located at 4284 White Oak Road for a place of worship in an existing cemetery to demolish the existing church, construct a proposed church and multi-use facility.
Second.
Any question on this item?
Good, Mr. Chairman. Looking through the backup information, and I talked with Strickland earlier, the proposed setbacks for this structure are 90 feet from the center line of White Oak Road, which I assume is required. But then we get into the setbacks at the rear of the property of only 10 feet, and then it's reduced to five feet on the side property line. And throughout the narrative, it talked about the integrity of the area in, you know, similar. And what you find out in that rural area are adjoining properties with a good margin of buffer, adjoining properties. And I think that's why it alongs so good out there. We can't, they can't see me, which I'm sure they appreciate. But I would ask the board to consider it's doable to increase that side and rear property buffer, or inline system, others that I've read in here of 30 feet, oh, in that range. Beautiful trees there, very natural vegetation. I think the property should be rezoned. I'm excited for the project. I think it's really an improvement. But I think for their benefit more than other property owners, they would appreciate and further away from goats and cows and horses and things.
Retired educators?
Retired educators. So that is something that I would ask for us to consider versus this 10-foot setback.
Is that something we can consider, Mr. Slachter?
Think so.
I don't see any reason why, like planned that they've submitted by a 30-foot side and rear. You're an applicant?
No one from the church.
Thanks.
I'm Elijah Holly, 4657 Story Mill Road in Hepsibur, Georgia, part of this project. We are at your leisure, whatever you desire. We're going to try to accommodate. We just want to get this project approved and start working on it. If you need a 30-feet buff all the way around, I don't think we have any problem with that.
Right now, the building is not threatening the setback of any, anything.
Plenty of room.
Yeah.
But they did have a proposed recreation area pool, future?
But that's, when you say future, that's future.
I would suggest you think twice on that pool. The way things are going, maybe it's flash fast. None of my business.
Well, thank you for your comments, acceptance of that.
Make that a condition of the motion.
Thanks, Mr. Holly.
Oh, that's to Mr. Morris. I think if he would like to amend the motion to do that, and the owner has indicated that they don't object.
If I could amend the motion, I think I'm correct in this. Help me. I make the motion to approve the rezoning from R8 to S1 with conditional use located at 4285 White Oak Road for a place of worship in an existing cemetery to demolish the existing church and construct a proposed church and multi-use facility with the understanding that proposed setbacks remain at 90 feet from the center line of White Oak Road and 30 feet around the remainder of the property rear and sides.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'd like to add a buffer.
Yeah, I think there's a question about an undisturbed buffer.
With an undisturbed buffer, put it in that 30-foot side and rear.
That would clear it up.
Property line.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? A vote on the amended motion, which may or may not make the first motion mute. But all in favor of the amended motion, please raise your right hand. Okay? Then we move on with the amended motion. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, sir.
Next item?
All right.
Favorites?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use for massage located at 3685 Riverwatch Parkway, zone P1, in order to bring the existing site into conformance and permit new massage businesses to operate at this location.
Second.
That was tough for you to read, wasn't it?
Easy for me to second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item, sir.
I make the motion to approve the rezoning from a, or a 16, give or take, acre portion of one parcel located at 4521 Willie Daniel Road, from R1 to S1 with a conditional use for a public school in order to open a K through 8 charter school, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 20th, 2016 Planning Commission Report.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Part of those conditions were already a deceleration of stacking lane along Blanchard Woods Drive, and also a plan review concerning circulation study, drop-off, and demonstrating that expected vehicle can be accommodated without impacting vehicle operations along Blanchard Woods Road. All that will take part, take place during the engineering review when more final plans are submitted as opposed to concept plans. Any further discussion?
Just that those came in after the planning commission, Mr. Chairman. So the two items you just mentioned would be in addition to planning commission comments. Because these two items came in after the planning commission approval.
Mr. Allen, will you incorporate those items as discussed into your motion?
Yes, sir.
We had a second over here.
Yes, sir.
Motion to second, including the conditions added at this meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Mr. Bachelor, I'm disappointed that we have no legal matters for you to take part in. Well, not really, though.
I was doing it.
You've taken care of it beforehand, right? Chairman, we do not have an executive session. Do we have any other business to come before this meeting or the commission? Would someone like to suggest that we vacate the premises?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest we vacate the premises.
Can we get a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Courage earned. Thank you, Chevy, for being here.
No legal and no that, that, I think. Haven't that happened a lot?